Check. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Kahala Neighborhood Board, starting at seven and ending hopefully by, let's say, eight thirty tonight. My name is Christian Decavato, I'm the Vice Chair. Rich Turbin is out today with a personal request, so he won't be attending this evening. Let's go ahead down the line and introduce ourselves.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah. Good evening. Lee Caston Gay. District three, subdistrict three.
This is Sylvia Hamedah. I'm Sub District Three. Good evening.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And then to the gentlemen in the, in the chairs over there, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
My name's Kevin Wong, Sub District Four.
Right. Board member Colin Fujiki, Sub District One.
Well, welcome this evening, everybody. Oh, we got, oh, perfect. We have quorum this evening, which means we can actually do some things. Excellent. So first thing, call to order. Let's go ahead and start with the Honolulu Fire Department, please. Do we have a representative here this evening? Awesome. Please go ahead and introduce yourself for everyone.
Hi, good evening. This is Captain William Mahuna from the Kamaki Fire Station. I have March twenty twenty four's incident statistics.
Please hold on one second. We're having trouble hearing you. Let us fix it on our end real quick and then.
Let me know. Can you hear me?
Very, very softly. It's an issue on our end, I believe. So just bear with us for one second.
I can hear him very clearly, so it must be on your end.
Perfect.
Okay, let me know when you're ready. Or I'll try to speak louder. How's that?
No worries.
Speaker on?
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like. All right, try to speak again, please.
Okay, can you hear me now? No.
Somehow we're now. Nope. Hold on, try to speak again.
Yes.
All right, we have touched down, ladies and gentlemen. Please let's continue then. Sorry, begin with your reintroduction again.
Good evening. Yeah, I am Captain William Mahuna from the Kamaki Fire Station. I have March's incident statistics. For fire, structure fires, we had two. For wildland brush fires, we had zero. Nuisance fires were two. Cooking fires, zero. And eight activated alarms, which were no, no fire at those calls. For emergencies, we had forty-one medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. One motor vehicle crash. Zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous material incidents. For the fire safety tip for April, we are going to discuss evacuation planning. Have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire, or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood due to the emergency. You can visit fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Leave early enough to avoid being caught in a fire, smoke, or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relatives' house, a low-risk area, or a shelter or evacuation center. And finally, take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. That's all I have for tonight. Any questions for me?
Do we have any questions? I think we're all good. Thank you so much for your report and all that you guys do. We appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. All right. Up next, we have Honolulu Police Department. Do we have a representative from the Honolulu Police Department with us this evening? Don't hear anybody, so we can move on to the Board of Water Supply. Oh. Oh, there we go. Lieutenant Mira, how are you? Hold on. Sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. There we go. Excellent. Good evening, Lieutenant.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Good evening. Sorry, let's see. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Lieutenant Mira, Honolulu Police Department, we're going to begin with the statistics. Motor vehicle thefts, we had three this month. Burglaries, seven. Thefts, twelve. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, we had five. Total calls for service, six thousand. Car accidents, scams. So before scam, we're a sharp knot. You may be a pro by stranger who accuses, accuses you of hitting their vehicle. They will then show you damages to their car. They will tell you that your vehicle caused the damages, and if their damages appear to be old from another incident. After showing you the damage, the stranger will demand that you pay them cash for the cost of the repairs. So basically, do not pay the stranger. If you pay the stranger, you will often demand more money once you know that, once they know you're willing to pay for the initial amount. If you refuse to pay, the stranger may threaten these and tell you that your auto insurance rates will go up if a police report is made. The stranger is trying to discourage you from calling. If you are involved in an accident, or if you are unsure if you caused an accident, please call nine one one. Tell the officer what had happened and let the officer do the accident investigation. Okay?
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Lieutenant Mira? I think we are all good this evening.
I have a question. Lieutenant, I'm not sure if it was you that out, that here a couple of meetings, but we had quite a few resident concerns regarding a residence that, that is in our area. I'm trying to find what it is, unfortunately. Do you remember? Was there Anson? Anson, do you know what it was? It's in our, in our folder. But yeah, they have, there's several resident concerns about a house on, kind of by, by Start the Sea. And I was just wondering if there was any updates regarding that.
I don't recall. Sometimes we rotate between the lieutenants. Do you remember the, do you remember the details on that, what the concerns were?
Give me ones. Get it up. It was for thirteen forty-two Hoakoa Place.
Hoakoa?
Yeah, Hoakoa, H O A K O A. Place.
Okay. Thirteen forty-two Hoakoa Place. Okay. And you remember what the concerns was?
I guess there just was concerns about vagrants being there, potential drug use, and lots of other, I guess, weird on some structures going up there that were potentially unsightly. But we had several letters, resident letters, that were from, in February. Anson, if you could forward those on to him, that'd be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we can look at that. I'm not, I don't have any details on that specific, but obviously, if there's any on scene, on, on scene violations, wherever the concerned residents are, they can call nine one one. You know, I don't, I'm not sure what, and it seems like there's different issues. So if there's things on the street, obviously, if it's cars, you know, vegan cars, abandoned vehicles, cars that have, you know, expired, registered safety, stuff like that. I mean, you can feel free to call nine one one. At least we can address those problems. Yeah, we can start from there.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
Sure.
Thank you for your time this evening, Lieutenant Mira. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do over at HPD.
Appreciate it. Thanks for saying, thanks.
Always. Up next, we have the Board of Water Supply. Do we have a representative from the Board of Water Supply?
Hi, I'm here. This is Lorna.
Hi, good evening, Lorna.
Hello. I have a quick announcement for this month. I have no main breaks to report for last month. The announcement for this month is about Detective Leak Week, which is occurring now. So we just want to encourage and let you folks know it's time to chase down and repair those pesky leaks. For the Borderwars, I have once again partnered with Heartland Hawaii for the annual Detective Leak Week campaign. Again, it's until Saturday, April twentieth. But this campaign is an annual reminder to check your plumbing fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. And because one of the most common leaks is a leaky faucet, leaky toilet, sorry. Faucets are also something as well, but leaky toilets are the biggest wasters, and, and that's usually caused by a faulty or worn-out flapper. So if that needs to be changed out, it's pretty inexpensive to replace that. So if you need to get more information, visit our website at www.borderwaterspot.com. That's all I have for this evening. Does anybody have questions?
Any questions?
I'm wondering if you just give us an update on what, what's going on with Red Hill?
So I don't have anything at today's meeting. I can find out if there's any updates, and I can report them next month, if that's okay.
I, I, thanks.
What was that? I'm sorry. You kind of broke up there.
Thank you. That would be great.
Okay, great. Yeah, I will ask them for any kind of updates to have. I don't hear a question.
The microphone is not working.
Okay.
Christian, the microphone is not working.
The sign language.
Still not working. Something is up with the sound.
You want to type it in the chat, and I can read the chat?
He's saying thank you, goodbye.
That's it? Okay. Is that me for thank you then? We're good? I'm not sure.
Can you guys hear us at all, virtually?
I can hear that.
Just one person that can hear us.
We can hear, we can hear that. Whoever's talking, we can hear.
Yeah.
No, it's definitely on our end.
You can hear clearly now.
You're impressed?
About now.
Now I can hear.
And now?
Yes.
All right, Lorna, thank you so much for your patience and for your time. We appreciate them both.
No problem.
Sincerely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Up next, do we have any reports of members attending any other neighborhood board meetings? None at all? Excellent. Uh, let's see, is Michael Buck here this evening? Mike Buck from Lieutenant, or sorry, Governor Josh Green's office? All right, Mr. Buck is not here this evening. Up next is Casey Abe on.
Yes, I'm here. Let me check my screen here.
There we are. Good evening, Casey. How are you?
Good evening. I think wait, no, just a minute here. Uh, let's see. My screen. Oh. Okay. Ah, shoot, uh, let's see. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
You guys can see my screen. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Maybe.
Good evening. Members of the Wai'la Kahala Neighborhood Board, Casey, I'm from the State D O T Highway Division. At last month's meeting, I guess there was a concern about potholes on the Wai'la Avenue near Kilowatt Avenue going eastbound. I need a quick field check investigation on April first, and this picture is before the Kilowatt Avenue intersection. Okay, let's see. Oh, maybe, you know what? Let me, excuse me, I think I'm sharing the wrong screen. Just a minute here. I have to reset my. Sorry about that.
And in case, just so that you know, your entire, you could see your notes as well. I don't know.
That's why, yeah, I, I think I had the wrong one on. Let's see. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I gotta, wait a minute here. I have a problem here. Just a minute. Okay. Wait now. Okay. Okay. Let me try this again here. Okay. And see this enough? Okay, yeah. Again, yeah, last month, I did a quick field investigation April first. This picture is before the Kilowatt Avenue intersection. This picture is after you pass the Kilowatt Avenue. I'm working with our Wai'la District Maintenance Section to schedule the patching of these puddles before they become a major problem. I will need to report back the status at the future meeting. Also, during my April first field investigation, I noticed a lot of graffiti, so I informed our district maintenance group. They managed to paint over some of the obvious graffiti when I did my follow-up field investigation yesterday. This is Traffic Scene Control Box at Kilowatt Avenue intersection, which is a very popular location for graffiti. This location is the Drainage Canal Headway going eastbound on Wai'la Avenue after the Texaco Gas Station. And the graffiti on the concrete column is your approach Chili's Restaurant. And graffiti along Wai'la Avenue on ramp going eastbound onto Kailua Highway has been covered up. But unfortunately, our maintenance crew has a lot more graffiti cleanup work to do. The Wai'la on ramp going eastbound onto Kailua Highway. Signs on the H one freeway as your poster while I call off rent and more graffiti on the Wai'la Avenue during my field investigation yesterday. Lots of graffiti on the adjacent pedestrian path as vehicles traveling onto the H one on ramp going westbound. And Wai'la on ramp going eastbound onto Kailua Highway. I know it's a missing sign, so we'll be working with our maintenance crew to install a new sign. And finally, I noticed the highway lighting standard is missing along the H one on ramp going westbound. I'll work with our district lighting crew to install a new light standard. And this concludes my report. If the board members or elected officials have any concerns about state highways, they can email me. If possible, attaching photos or Google Map location of your concern will be very helpful. I can take questions at this time. Thank you.
I see Sylvia has a question.
Okay, it's about the freeway from Kahala by times when you're going on the ramp and there's a road above it. The first one, I think, is Wai'la, and the second one is Harding. The, on the first one, on the left-hand side, is a sign underneath. It says maximum speed limit fifty, minimum forty. And on the second one, it's on the right-hand side. It says maximum fifty, minimum forty. I would like the maximum fifty to be there, but I would like to have the forty taken away because like this morning, when traffic is heavy at eight o'clock in the morning, I was driving less than five miles an hour. There was cars getting close to each other that you can't be doing forty miles an hour on the freeway.
Okay, this sign is located on the H one freeway.
Yes.
And this is going eastbound or westbound?
Westbound.
Westbound in the morning, as you get on the freeway from your Wai'la on ramp. After.
Yes.
Okay, so you wanna, you want us to see if we can remove the minimum forty miles?
Yes.
Okay, I will work with our traffic branch to see if we can remove the minimum forty miles and, and move the fifty miles. Well, I'll be looking at. I gotta get back with you next one.
Casey, just a follow-up question on that. Can you explain the reasoning for having a minimum speed limit these days?
I will go double-check, but from my understanding, the minimum is just to let people know that so, so the traffic flow can move smoothly. There's no congestions. But I can double-check with our traffic office, why did they install the minimum forty miles?
Yeah, I think that might have been pertinent thirty years ago. I'm not sure about these days.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns for Casey? I think we're good. Casey, thank you again so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the work you're doing out there.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Up next is Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative Derek Miyashiro here this evening. He couldn't make it. All right. On to the next, Councilmember Tommy Waters.
Hello.
Ah, there we go.
Yo, hello, with Chair Waters Office. Are you guys able to hear me?
We can indeed.
Terrific. Good evening. So I'm just gonna go ahead and keep our report brief this month. We do. I did share with, oh, sorry. There we go. I did share with.
There we go. I was about to say, you look like a public painting, but.
There was a cover on front of it. I did share with Chair Turbin earlier this week verbiage for a resolution for commercial activity at Kahala Beach. I'm not sure where he's at with regards to drafting that, but we did forward over the information to help the Neighborhood Board with drafting their resolution. Chair Waters is still currently in the budget review process for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure. I think one of our representatives did drop off the D four Council District Four newsletter. Not sure if you guys have it. Terrific. Within the newsletter, we do have our legislative update. Really important to highlight page two, the Primary Urban Center Development Plan, update for the Kahala Neighborhood. Bill twenty-four twenty-four, to adopt the revised Primary Urban Center Development Plan for the city and county of Honolulu, passed its first reading at the April full council meeting and has been referred to the Committee on Planning and the Economy. Chair Waters is currently involved in making changes in the land use place type maps for the Kahala Neighborhood. These maps indicate the various land use designations allowing development and density in each area. Honolulu City Council is also currently working to amend the Development Standards Section of the Land Use Ordinance. Bill sixty-four relating to the use regulations. The current version of this bill would permit Kahala Mall to develop housing above the commercial spaces like Alamoana Shopping Center. Chair, however, disagrees with D P P's views that the community would want several floors of residential units above Kahala Mall. Even though the height limit is lower than in Kahala compared to Alamoana, he's, Chair Waters is committed to preserving the charming character of Kahala Neighborhood out of the high structures. On page four, we do have a brief breakdown of the capital improvement projects that we have for District Four. And also on page five, we do have, just wanted to kind of re-highlight the complete streets that we, I guess, projects that the city does have in Kahala Wai'la neighborhood. We, of course, have the Kilowatt Avenue Road improvements, as well as the Monstrat Avenue pedestrian crossing improvements. And lastly, sorry, Resolution twenty-four sixty-two urging the city administration to construct additional beach sand volleyball courts at city parks. There is a private sand volleyball court in the Kahala neighborhood at Hunakai, Hunakai Park. Based on site visits within Council District Four, as well as attending Neighborhood Board meetings. In addition to that, the mayor's recent town halls hosted throughout Oahu, Chair Waters and our team have received consistent feedback that the city parks and open spaces are crucial to people and their lives, and it should be the priority of city leadership in both the executive and legislative branches. Volleyball is a popular fast-growing sport, and due to the need for practice and game facilities, the capacity of, I'm sorry, surpasses the capacity for existing gyms and courts. Parks can serve as an additional outdoor venue here on Hawaii. If anyone on the board has any recommendations for potential locations for beach sand volleyball courts, I mean, parks, please let Chair Waters or our staff know. And I can take back any questions to Chair Waters?
Okay, right off the bat, I'd like to nominate Wai'la Beach Park as an excellent location for a sand beach volleyball court, please. There's a large amount of open land on the right-hand side. That would be easy to fit two, maybe even three courts. There's an active community in the area, which I know would enjoy getting out there and getting some, some exercise as well. Does anybody else have any other recommendations or locations that they'd like to propose?
I think that's a great idea. I was just gonna, oh, sorry, go ahead, Killer.
No, I was just gonna say, it's crazy to think that here in Hawaii, we only have actually four city sand, well, sand beach volleyball courts. So to have more would be awesome, but. Sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna, I was just gonna echo what Vice Chair said. I think that that area would be really perfect, and I think that because of the nearby parking, then it would be more accessible to many people.
Absolutely agree, and then also really good visibility too with the visiting tourists as well. So good locational draw as well, so good benefits all around. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for Keola outside of the volleyball issue?
Yeah, Killer, I just want to make a correction to your resolution inquiry that you're having about the commercial activity. It's actually the Wai'la Beach Park that we're, that we're, as we're mentioning, the volleyball court would be at, not the Kahala Beach Park.
Okay, thank you so much.
This is Sylvia. To me, the Wai'la Beach Park, the stalls can be full. And so if you're having more events, you might want to look at having another second story of parking, because sometimes the parking stalls all look full already.
I always welcome more parking in our neighborhood, so absolutely on board with Sylvia. If there would ever be a way to expand the parking too, that would be greatly appreciated. But nevertheless, still an excellent location for beach volleyball.
Thank you so much.
And then I just had a quick question on Resolution twenty-four dash sixty-four, overt video monitoring sitting county. Is there any way we could get surveillance like that located for Diamond Head? I think that would be a prime location, help cut down on the crime, the break-ins, all, all of it.
So like the Diamond Head Lookouts?
Yes.
Okay, sure. I can go ahead and inquire, and I can get back to you next month.
Marvelous. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
I'll be here for the rest of the evening if you guys had any other questions.
Perfect. All right. Do we have a representative from Bert Kobayashi here this evening? None? All right. Do we have a representative from Mark Hashem's office? All right. Do we have a representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office?
Yes, hello.
Hi, good morning, Teresa. How are you this evening?
Hi, I'm doing good. Um, I just have some quick things to share from our office. Hi, I'm doing good. Um, I would just have some quick things um to share from our office and um I'll put all the links in the chat. Um, so first we have our monthly newsletter for um April and. Chat, you can visit it at Senator Chang dot com forward slash newsletters. Um, and then as some of um our community members might know, um we have a housing newsletter. We really want to encourage everyone to sign up for it. Um, it's over mail chimps. You can sign it. And then also for a quick legislative update, we have twelve uh bills moving into conference. Um. Sorry, next week, and there are six House bills and six Senate bills, and I put them all in the chat if anyone's interested. And then I can take any questions back to Senator Chang's office.
Uh, any bills being pushed forward that you think are important or uh worth noting?
Um. I don't wanna speak uh for a senator, but I think.
From a personal opinion.
Oh. Oh, I don't think I. Can speak on that, sorry. Um, but I just put in the chat.
Awesome. Perfect. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for Teresa from Senator Stanley Chang's office?
And um I just wanted to point out, yeah, I just wanna point to point out um Teresa that that we had that uh group. That is working on Diamond Head uh Hills on removing. On removing um. Uh invasive species uh on the mountain to reduce fire hazards and also beautify and plant more native plants. And they came to our board meeting to ask for assistance in getting a bathroom. Um, in the near vicinity. Um, and I put them in contact with you and I just wanted to uh with you folk with your office and they were so happy. And very pleased as to how responsive the senator had been. Um, just wanted to point out that I contacted all of our elected officials, the representative, and it was only. Um Senator Chang's office that that uh responded in in uh Mary from that organization wrote me a long email to. Say how thankful she was that I connected them to your office and how helpful you folks have been.
That's really sweet. Thanks for letting us know. And yeah, we really love Mary. I think. Her organization is doing so much great things, so we're really helpful or happy that we can be helpful.
Perfect. Well, thank you again, Teresa. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You as well. All right, on to residents, community concerns. So I see we have several members from the community this evening. Uh, does anybody have any concerns they'd like to bring up, address, discuss? Carol? Carol Hoshiko?
Yes. Um, Vice Chair and members of the board, um if you have a little bit of time, I'd like to give you an update about the Culinary Institute. And I did send some slides. Did somebody get those?
Yeah, I got the slides. Um, I did post it on to our uh Google slides, so.
Okay. Okay, I can um I can either show them or just give a quick um update about the Culinary Institute. Um, would you like me to show any slides or is there not enough time?
Uh, if it's not, I'm sure we'd love to see the progress that's been occurring.
Okay, uh, hold on just a minute and I'll try to bring those up. Uh, let's see. Oh, can you see it?
We cannot.
Okay, um. Well, it looks like maybe it's not gonna work. Well, let me let me just give you a quick update. Um, the uh. Loading dock for the auditor uh for the restaurant auditorium, uh the slab has been poured. And this around the site, the curbs and the sidewalks have been um. Uh poured and all of that is progressing very well. Uh, the stormwater detention. Um, chamber is in progress. The rock walls uh by the terrace gardens are in progress. The restaurant auditorium aluminum doors and windows are in progress. Uh, the Innovation Center, which is located. On the Malca side of the current labs is progressing along really well. Uh, it has um the roof panels on it. And um the sidewalls are are up. And the rough end is in progress. So if you've gone by the site, you'll you'll notice that there's uh quite a bit of progress. Um, we're hoping that the restaurant will be open in spring of twenty twenty five. Um, we have formed a. Uh collaboration with the Culinary Institute of America that was made possible by our CIP Director Roy Yamaguchi. And in the fall of this year, there will be a couple of professional uh classes offered up at the CIP. And to follow those, then uh the Culinary Institute will be taking on the culinary enthusiast classes, so. Uh, there's a lot that will be happening at the CIP in the next uh year or so, so uh we'll keep you informed about all of that. Okay, that's my report.
Perfect. Thank you so much. It looks like it's coming along marvelously. Indeed. Looking for a dude in there. And does anybody have any questions for Carol?
I have a quick question, Carol. Um, I know that in the past, the 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 Culinary Institute had helped to do fundraisers for nonprofits. Um, you know, they had done cooking contests, those kind of things. Well, those are, is that the plan for the for the future as well?
I know that um, you know, up at the Culinary Institute, uh there is um like a. I I would call it a a banquet room, and so, you know, it's possible to do things in there and then at the Innovation Center. You know, it's a a small auditorium style. Uh, I mean, I'm sorry, in the auditorium, it's an auditorium style. Um seating, which might be possible for use and then at the Innovation Center. So I know that um we value uh collaborating with the community, and so I'm sure that that's um part of the plan.
That's great. I'm looking forward to like an Iron Chef style competition in that.
Oh, I know. So am I. I I was wondering if we should call it the the lava chef or something like that. Yeah, we're looking forward to that, and the Innovation Center will have the capacity to broadcast. Um, such competitions, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that update, Carol. All right, up next, or I guess continuing uh community concerns and comments. Does anybody else have any community concerns or comments? Excellent. Uh, onto unfinished business and presentations. Um, we need to. Oh. Go right ahead. You're all right. That's what this whole thing is here for.
It's a bad look. I just.
Uh.
Yes, my name is Tina Grandinetti. There's a few of us here actually tonight who are uh running to represent House District Twenty. Um, I'm one of them, and so I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. Um. Tell you a little bit about myself. I born was born and raised here on Oahu. Um, I currently work as a housing policy analyst. At a nonprofit working on economic justice. I'm really passionate about um policy that puts people first. And thinking about people centered solutions to our housing crisis. Before that, I was working as uh the Office Manager for Representative Amy Peruso. In the State House and I took a very active role in making sure community voices were heard at the legislature. And then in my non-professional life, um I've been really involved in grassroots uh efforts to protect Hawaii's lands and waters from. Uh, the Coalition to Shut Down Red Hill um to the movement to or the efforts to. Uh, stop the mass evictions at Kapilani uh villages down. Like in Moiliili area. Um, yeah, and I just really love our community and uh kind of see this as a way to. Show that love in a different way. Um, and I actually will pass it to some other candidate.
Well, you you stay right.
Oh, sure, sure. Question.
Who else here is running for? Two. All right, so we have three of, I believe, four total candidates. How lucky are we?
It's a packed race.
Well, since we have uh other candidates here, uh we'll just kind of broad blanket same questions for everybody. What do you think is the most important thing to improve the Kahala Wailei neighborhood?
Um, oh. I don't know. Actually, I'll be honest, I live in the Kapahulu side of the district, so I came to the neighborhood board to learn more about. The issues that um the Kahala Wailei community are facing. I know for me, top of mind, because I work in housing policy. Is the primary urban core development plan. Um, I think that has very serious implications for all parts of our district and. I really believe in planning that um, you know, centers the needs of our communities and respects the. Character of our place, our sense of place. Um, we all love our neighborhoods very much for a reason, um and we all also want to see more. Um, housing that meets the needs of local people, um whether that's new construction or protecting existing affordable housing. Um, that's the first thing that comes to mind, and also I would say. We have beautiful beaches and that connects to our environment. Um, we need to protect our environment in all the ways that we can.
Excellent. Thank you again so much for your time.
Really put me on the spot.
I know.
I wasn't prepared for that.
Be quick on your feet for the people. Um, actually, if we want to have the next candidate step up, let's uh round robin this.
Sure, yeah. I feel like I'm a pop star.
Yeah. Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
John Choi. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just came from uh my daughter's graduation parent. Meeting and uh, you know, it was packed house and uh I raised my kids in Kapahulu. Uh, been in this district for twenty two years on the same address. Um. I know how difficult it can be to raise a family, uh regardless where you live and uh. I am the only candidate that has. Uh, a family in Kapahulu and is raising a family in Kapahulu. Um, my other daughter's a sophomore. And I know that. Crime prevention is uh. On everyone's mind. Uh, I've had my car stolen in front of my house. I've had my neighbors' homes ripped off. Thank goodness mine. My home has never been burglarized, but um and. The homeless issue and. You know, we really spent eight billion dollars already. And we're twenty four thousand units short. And if you div- divide eight billion by twenty four thousand, that's roughly about four hundred thousand. Per twenty four thousand unit. We could have built for what we did with the rail, and I'm not knocking the rail, but I'm just saying that. Upon analysis, we could have built twenty four thousand units, the exact number that we're short of um here on Oahu. And uh my parents live three minutes away and my dad's eighty. Five and my mom is eighty and she's got early signs of dementia and he spends all his time caring for her and we, you know. We're in constant contact and visit them and they come over, but um Capuna care is important. So those are three. Platforms that I think are important for our district, which is number one. Crime prevention, number two. The homeless issue and number three, Capuna care. Um, I've been a fighter for the people of Hawaii for the past twenty five years. I started out as a Deputy Attorney General in the. Child abuse section, which is um very rewarding and difficult at the same time. I've been a civil trial lawyer championing. The rights of people against. Big corporations and even our own state and city governments and uh. I'm mature, I'm proven, and I hope to be the next representative for District Twenty.
Well, thank you for preemptively answering my question. Where's your daughter graduating from?
From Punang.
Ah, congratulations.
And they went to Waikiki Elementary and Kahala Elementary, my older daughter and my younger daughter.
Well, thank you so much for attending this evening. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Onto our next candidate. Please introduce yourself.
My name's Kevin Wong. Um, I guess a little bit about myself. I was born and raised here right on Twelfth Avenue. Um, right now I live with my grandparents on Twenty Second. Uh, my brother and I helped to take care of them. They're in their nineties. But um for work, I I started working at the State Capitol back in twenty twelve uh for Rep Nishimoto, who um is the rep for the. Moiliili Makali area. Uh, back then, the district was shifted over, um. Which kind of included uh almost to Waikiki Elementary. But while I was there, I uh. You know, spent a lot of time in this area, uh rekindled my passion for this community. Um, I stayed there for seven years uh while I was finishing up law school. Uh, after I passed the bar, I started working in the mayor's office, so I've been there for the last five years. My focus there is state legislation that affects the city. Um, all the little things that um. The state wants the city to do to improve. Uh, we discuss it with them, point out the issues, whether it's procurement, resources, things like that. We try to figure out how we can best serve um or meet the core services that we try to provide to our residents. Um, you know, as far as the, to answer your question, um. My biggest thing that I've heard um as I walk around is gonna be a very broad thing, but homelessness. And the thing about that is, is that it touches so many different parts of the community. You know, you start with um mental health. There are so many issues um regarding our homeless population, whether they can or can't get the help that they need. Um, so one of the things that I uh would like to focus on is streamlining that process so that they can get that help. Right now it takes some type of event where they're brought in front of a judge that can declare them unfit. And then something has to happen for them to be given a guardian. Um, and then we can. Do things to take care of them because we don't want to force things on people. Um, branching off of that, uh the next part. Of the homeless issue that I see a lot is the crime. Um, you know, now I live on Twenty Second with my grandparents. There are a lot of homeless individuals on the slopes of Diamond Head that come down, look into our garage. You know, they're setting fires in the back while they're cooking. Um, I worry about my grandparents every time I leave the house for work. Um, so going along that uh outside of my job, I am on the Hawaii Health Systems Board. Um, which deals a lot with Leahi Hospital and Maui here. Uh, when I was little, I went to Kamaki Christian and we would regularly walk over to Leahi Hospital. And we would spend time with the residents there, reading, talking, doing all sorts of things. Um, so long term care is really important to me. I know personally I'm lucky where I have my brother. I have some uncles. I have a bunch of cousins. Uh, we take care of them, but if I didn't have that, I don't know what we would do. So um focusing on that and improving that is another focus of mine. Try to keep it short, keep going.
What uh law school did you graduate from?
What law school? Uh, Richardson, UH.
Thank you so much. Um, do we have any other community comments, concerns that need to be heard this evening? Thank you to our three qualified and wonderful candidates for coming out this evening. We appreciate y'all and y'all's time. Um, up next, we need to approve the minutes, our last meeting's minutes. Does anybody have any comments? Uh. Sylvia, we all good? Perfect. All right. Next up, our one thousand dollar one-time fund. Oh, hold on one sec. Oh, that's right. Uh, and we need to vote for a ripple. Can I get a second? Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. All in favor, thank you. Up next, the one thousand dollar one-time fund for outreach. Um, I believe Pedro, you were working with Brian Wong. Uh, to figure out uh location and what exactly we wanted to do with that money. Is that still ongoing?
Uh, he took it back from me. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get anywhere with with any of the locations, uh so he was gonna come up with some additional ideas.
No worries. Brian Wong is out this evening and is unable to be contacted. So we'll wait until the next meeting to continue. So in this case, we just defer them? All right, so we will postpone on that. Next item, moving venue of the Kahala Neighborhood, Kahala Wailei Neighborhood Board to Wilson Elementary School. That has been proposed.
So we did call Wilson Elementary School about this. They can have our meetings over there, but they're not too sure right now. Because July, it's summer, it's like it's off, so there's no custodian to currently like clean up afterwards. So currently, we can go Wilson in July, but it's not fully like set in stone yet. We're just waiting for a reply back to them if they can get a custodian. But if you have any other options now, like any libraries that you want us to go, you can check that out or any other schools. Sorry.
I second the Culinary Institute. KCC, we would love to host our neighborhood board meetings at your school and Culinary Institute.
I think we also request in the other public schools that are along the Kilauea Strip.
I'm not too sure of the.
The other schools?
Yeah, the other schools. You could just give me.
Kahala and Kamoki. No, Wailei is outside of our district.
Kahala and what's other?
Kahala and Kamoki.
Kamoki, okay. I will talk, we'll check that out also.
Thank you.
Excuse me, this is Carol Hoshko. Did you, did you say that you wanted me to check to see if it was possible to meet at KCC?
Well, ours was said slightly in jest, but we are quite serious. I personally would love to host a KCC. I don't know about everybody.
KCC would be great, as well as like that, that new culinary.
With ceiling to floor, glass windows, projectors, that would be marvelous.
Yeah, I'll have to check with the Vice Chancellor of Administrative Services and Roy Yamaguchi.
Well, I mean, whatever we can work out, we'd be more than happy.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we will postpone that as well. Let's see, presentations and new business. Discussing the beach weddings on Kahala Beach. The, let's see, Tommy Waters has presented. Where are you? I don't see it here. I spoke with Rich Turbin this evening, who said that he had reached out to Tommy Waters' office, I believe, to see the type of legislation and the structuring that they were using for their bill to push forward in the hopes that we could use similar language or proven language to move forward. So unless anybody has any comments or concerns they'd like to issue on it, I think we postpone. Onto the next.
Real quick, Vice Chair, Anson. We, um, do we, going back to the, the $1,000 we have for our community outreach. I remember our last assistant saying that there was potential a sunset of that funding every year. Have we lost some of that?
Oh, for the $1,000 outreach, we were done with that. That was only a one-time thing.
The sunset already? Are we done?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can take it off our.
We already have the, the items ready for your outreach. You just tell us the location and we will check that out.
So we have a $1,000 thing somewhere that we can spend somehow.
That was a one-time thing and we're not doing that again. But if you want to do more outreach, we can try, see it, we'll.
Well, we poorly did this last one, so I don't think we need to get another $1,000 to sit in somebody else's pocket. But thank you. I was just wondering, we're not wasting it.
Up next, we have a presentation from the Board of Water Supply on the East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan. And they are seeking an endorsement tonight for this plan. Do we have any representatives here this evening from the Board of Water Supply?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Barry Usagawa. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Actually, if you could speak up just a tiny bit, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, Chair or Miss Chair. We made a presentation last, I believe it was last month, on the, on the watershed management plan for East Honolulu. I can go through it again if you want. I guess we're here to, if you could consider a support for the plan so that when we take it to council, it'll help us, you know, get it through. I'm glad you can share my screen if you want.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind giving us sort of a Sparks Note version, just a nice little brief summary.
Okay. Are you folks able to see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so the, the Honolulu Watershed Management Plan is basically the, the water plan for the land use plan, which is the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan. And it is a, a plan for the, you know, for the region from, I guess, Kahala to, you know, Kaevi. We've gone through, I think we've been working on this for several years, three years at least. So I have an overview of the planning process, the community involvement, the public review and final drafts and the adoption process and questions. So this is the overview. So it, it's a, our goal is to provide a balance between preservation and sustainable water use. And we have five objectives, promoting sustainable watersheds, protecting and enhancing water quality and quantity. So this is not just drinking water, it's, it's watersheds, yes, of Mauka to Makai, forest health, agricultural water, you know, sufficient and efficient water use in the urban space and, and quality of our initial waters. There's certainly water for native Hawaiian rights and traditional customary practices. It was very much a public engaged plan. There's education around water because we need to conserve it and use it wisely. And the plan also looks into the future to 2040 to meet demands at reasonable costs. So in the planning process, we looked at research issues in the, the region. A lot of it is polluted runoff control and sustainability. We did a watershed analysis and demand forecasting. There's not much growth in this area. It's very much a sustainable community. We looked at water supply options. We have, I think, one well that we a couple wells, Pia and I think Wailei West and Wailei Nui, I think maybe out of the district, but there's like three well projects in the area for growth and to sustain water demand there because we import water from Windward and from Pearl Harbor into East Honolulu. And then watershed management plans and policies and projects and strategies on how we would achieve those goals and into the public review draft, which we had on our website for, since, I think we put the public review draft out last year. So yeah, started from 2019, so five years. And we're at the adoption process. We're getting there, the community involvement that we did. Several consultations, 10 neighborhood board presentations, maybe one more for community-wide meetings, which we held virtually and in person. And here's the dates when we had them. And then getting into the review, the final draft. So there's like five chapters. Again, just how we support the, the plans and policies of the Sustainable Communities Plan. And we've done it through all social media and, and, and also in person to get the, the word out for the public review draft. We got the, received a number of comments from the, from the neighborhood boards and community. We've updated that and incorporated the changes into the plan. And so we feel that it is ready for the adoption. Adoption process goes into we're making, we got, we got the support of the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board. We'd like the support of the Wailei Kahala Neighborhood Board and we have yet to, I guess we went to Kuleo and they didn't have quorum. So we need to go back there next month. But once we obtain the neighborhood board endorsements or support letters, then we'll take it to council and it has to be adopted by ordinance as well as from, through the the commission, the State Commission on Water Resource Management. And a public hearing will be scheduled for all of those. And we hope to get the thing adopted, the plan adopted and, and be the watershed plan for East Honolulu. And that's my presentation, Chair, and and then Barry Usagawa with the Water Supply, Water Resources Program Administrator. And if you folks could consider or have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or if you could consider a, a support for the plan, that would be very helpful.
What was the feedback, both positive and negative, that you received from the Waikai Board?
They wanted to make sure that the Ahupah of Wanalua was updated. Initially, there, the old Ahupah maps showed it extending to Wamanalo, so it included Wamanalo and Wanalua. And since then, the, the state has revised those maps. And so they wanted to make sure that we had the updated one. They added a few more watershed projects and I believe they tied to Kaevi as well as Pikeau. And, you know, of course, we have the Fish Pond and, and all of the, the two. They, they supported the, the two catalyst projects, which is improving the water quality of Wanalua Bay as well as improved the efficiency of, you know, water use in East Honolulu. Those are the ones that I recall.
Does this plan include the flood control of the Alawai or is that totally separate?
There, flooding was an issue as well as wildfire and water quality too. So I believe there is a flood control project for Waileupe because that's what flooded a number of years ago.
So specifically, does this include the six-foot walls built on the side of the Alawai or not?
No, it doesn't include Alawai. That's in the primary urban center.
Do any other members have any comments, concerns? Any community comments or concerns? All good. All right. Well, since we have quorum, let's see, Pedro, are you still on here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, perfect. All right. So we do have quorum. Oh, if you could speak into the microphone, please.
Hi, John Choi. So this is for the gentleman who just spoke from the water board. So have the studies been done on the sustainability of using East Honolulu wells to supply all the water needs for East Honolulu? I heard about the the freshwater wells that are available there. And is that a future plan right now going forward of the board? Thank you.
Yeah, so East Honolulu uses about nine million gallons per day. There's not enough sustainable yield in the, in the Wailei West and Wailei East aquifers to be self-sustaining there. So we import water from Windward about half a million gallons per day. And we import from, from Pearl Harbor, basically, you know, through Honolulu, yeah. There are four wells there in East Honolulu. They're small, the aquifer is very thin. We have Manako One and Two in Anakoa Ridge. We have a Waileiiki well, we have a Kuleo well. Our plans, future plans are for a well in Wailei Nui Valley, which is an existing well that's drilled already, Kamehameha Schools Land. We have another well at, actually it's in 16th Avenue, so it's outside the district. But those are the ones that we currently have in our capital improvement program. But there should be, you know, so as we, if we develop them, then what, what happens is that we import less from other districts into East Honolulu. But there should be, there is enough water for all, you know, the, the current population, including the agriculture areas in Kuleo Valley. I mean, that's Kuleo, Kamilo Nui Valley, excuse me.
I've visited some freshwater springs in the past 22 years. There's one right by Black Point on the Coco Head side of Black Point. That's in about maybe two to three feet of water, depending on the tide. And then there's one right in front of the Kuleo, where I think it's in somebody's private swimming pool that they converted. Christian, you're shaking your head. You've been to that one too?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with the Black Point one, but that's outside the district. But yeah, the Kaluhihi Fish Pond in Kuleo is definitely in there. So we have a project right up for that to increase freshwater flows into the Fish Pond as well as to reduce the nutrient loads because there's a couple cesspools that are in Kuleo that every time you flush the nutrients, you know, can, can cause algal blooms. So cesspool conversion is definitely a, a, a project right up that we need, we need to convert. The state DLR has a project that, you know, when they widened Kalananooli Highway, they cut off the freshwater flow into the Fish Pond. And so now they have a, a, a specific project that would basically install a drain line under Cal Highway to the Fish Pond and restore the freshwater flows. So we're working with the, we, that project was developed, working with the restorers of that Fish Pond.
And that was going to be my next question. Have you guys collaborated, and it sounds like you have, with the groups that are trying to bring back the fish ponds in East Honolulu?
Yeah, and there's, there's a tremendous amount of community groups that are working to manage their resource and clean it up and, and restore where they can. So, you know, certainly the, the, improving the quality of Wanalua Bay. Having that as a catalyst project means that we have to look Mauka and, you know, convert those cesspools. Install green infrastructure for stormwater management. So when it's, when it's storming all, all of sediment, you know, just flows into the bay, right? They have restoration of the, of the hais there, Havae. A lot of post office there, there's a couple of projects. And yeah, so there, there's a number of, there's something like, well, there's about 30 of these watershed management projects. About one-third of them are infrastructure, water, wastewater, stormwater, climate change. The, about the remaining two-thirds are actually working with the, basically reflecting what the community groups are doing in, in the watershed. As well as, you know, from, from the Koholau Mountain Watershed Partnerships, removing invasive species in the, in the forest, to removing, that's the other thing that Waikai Neighborhood Board wanted, was albeza removal. And so we added, you know, we emphasized that more. It was already in there to the, you know, serving the agriculture areas, preserving the remaining cultural sites there and the cleanup of the, of the natural waters. serving the agriculture areas, preserving the remaining cultural sites there, uh, and, uh, the cleanup of the, of the nearshore waters. Um, so it, it's quite a comprehensive, uh, plan, uh, for East Honolulu, one of the most comprehensive that I've been, um, working on, and I've been doing this for 30 years. Uh, I've still got four more to go, but, uh, this would be the fifth one that would be adopted.
Thank you very much, um, and thank you for all your work.
Yeah, thanks for your great questions.
You mentioned that, um, the plan is for, would, should provide for the current population. Did you use, uh, any figures for future populations?
You know, there, there are forecasts in the plan, um, and, um, I, I, I don't recall, but there are 50,000, something in that range. Um, the population projections are provided by the, the City Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, there is not much growth, um, because the urban area is fully built out. Um, there may be some pockets of redevelopment there, but, um, it, it does take into account the, the population forecast to 2040.
Thank you.
Sorry, my legs went off.
Yeah. I, I'm, I guess I'm curious, you know, like, so our, our neighborhood board is, uh, situated in Kahala Wai La, right? So it's the, the Wai La Awa. Um, and it, and it shows within your east, in your, your, your plan that we're, you're splitting our Awa in half and not considering part of it. And so it's like, I think your, your number one priority is to, uh, preserve utilizing the Awa method. Um, how is that benefiting our neighborhood when you're splitting it?
Well, I'm not splitting it. It's just basically the, you know, the actual district boundaries that we have to work with. Um, you know, the land use districts are, but pretty much, um, if I have a map, I can show you, um. See, let me try this one. Um, sorry, wrong one. Uh, I'm not sure what you mean by split, but let's try this one.
I, I mean, you, you're split, your, your division line not only splits our district, but it also splits the, the Wai La Awa, right? I mean, you can see it, it runs right through the middle of the valley.
Uh, here.
It doesn't.
Right.
It, it doesn't, it's true, you know, Awa.
Yeah, but we still, you know, it, it, so these districts are set by the, the general plan. So to change them, you gotta change the general plan as well as the Sustainable Communities Plan, district boundaries. They, you know, for the, for the most part, they're supposed to follow, you know, I don't know how they, you know, like Kohol Poco, for instance, follows the Moku boundary, but you know, in this case, you know, they, they cut it up like this. I, I don't know, but the, what's gonna happen here is, you know, while, if you're talking about like newly, uh, in, in particular, you know, you have, um, and I know you folks are looking at, you know, boundary adjustments and stuff, but, um, you know, it, it'll be the, the, the part that's not included in here would be, uh, included in the primary urban center, which is the next plan that I'm working. But it should still, um, have similar, um, strategies around, and the, the policies and strategies would still apply even though the map is, you know, cut the way it's cut out. I'm sorry, I don't know if I answered you, your question, but, you know. I don't make the maps.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I, I'm, I, you're, you're only bound by what your, your resources are. I, I guess I'm just, it's, it's, uh, I, I questioned the, the priority, you stating the priority is, is returning it to the, I forget what the, the thing is, but that's the number one goals is basing on the traditional Awa and, and you're clearly just cutting it in half. And you're coming to our neighborhood board asking for the support of it when we're, you're not, um, endorsing our full community.
Well, actually, on that note too, uh, due to the way that the wording for the meeting agenda was inputted, we actually cannot vote on this this evening. Uh, so I think it gives. Yeah.
Yeah, just for advisory, we shouldn't vote on it, but it depends if you guys.
Sure. No, I mean, I don't, not, you know, I think there was a different understanding from the last lady that coming here. She was gonna help provide a resolution for us to support as well, I believe. That, or, or supply the letter that, that, um,
I thought.
Waikha supplied. So we can, could, uh, copy that, emulate that.
Yeah. Well, either way, you now have an extra month of preparation time. So, uh, hopefully we'll be able to see the resolution and, uh, take a look at its wording. Um, and, uh, let's see. Um, does anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns for Board of Water Supply? Marvelous. Well, thank you so much for your time this evening. We greatly appreciate it.
Okay. All right. I guess I'll see you guys next month then.
We look forward to it. Thanks again, Barry. Appreciate you.
Thanks for putting it on the next month's agenda. Thank you. Bye.
Um, let's see here. Uh, unfinished business. Uh, the PUC development plan for the East Honolulu region, um, let's see, I think, uh, Rich said that he had been in communication with Tommy Waters' office over that. Uh, we see the upgraded wording, uh, over here that Keola introduced to us, Bill 24. Um, yeah, no worries. Uh, so outside of that, I don't think there's so much we can do. Yeah, um, so we will go ahead and.
I guess on that note, Anson, was there any movement? I know we, we passed, uh, something last week to request the DLNR and make an official request from our board to the DLNR. Were you able to process that?
Um, I, I believe I thought Richard Turbin was.
He was gonna do it?
Yeah. By those moments.
Postponed. Um, up next, the dangers of fires on Diamond Head caused by illegal campers and other causes. I know that this is a, uh, pressing concern for a lot of people. Um, we were going to try and come up with a resolution, I believe, for this one, and then there was community concern as well. Postponed. Um, and then, uh, the proposed demolition of the Shangri-La Breakwater. Um, we were waiting to hear back, I believe, from DLNR. They were supposed to present to us and we still.
A lot of DLNR requests that we have outstanding.
Uh, well, to any DLNR representative listening, we'd like you to show up, please. Um, and also Peter Dudgeon too. I know he's very passionate about this one. Um, all right, so, uh, postponed on that. Um, announcements, the next meeting, the regular meeting of the Wai La Kahala Neighborhood Board will be held Thursday, May 16th. Uh, so we hope everybody attends, re-attends. We'd love more community involvement, more community outreach. Uh, people showing up, voicing community concerns. So, uh, please feel free to, to attend, bring a friend. We have room for all. Um, and outside of that, uh, we're adjourned. So, uh, in order to dismiss, uh, can I have a second? Ah, all in favor? Passes. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good rest of your evening.
Bye, everyone.